Call to order, the planning commission meeting for Thursday, September 21st, 2023. Please stand and join us in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Crowell, please call the roll.
All right, Commissioner Knoblock is not here, Commissioner Heikala.
Here.
Commissioner Casey.
Here.
Commissioner Schmoki.
Here.
Commissioner Geisler.
Here.
And Chair Schwartz.
Here. All right, our first order of business this evening is to adopt our agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Schmoki to approve the agenda. Any corrections, additions? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and the agenda is adopted. Next order of business is to approve the minutes from our August 17th, 2023 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Heikala, second by Casey, any corrections or additions? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and the minutes are approved. Our first case under new business is planning case 23-18, conditional use permit for McManus Detailing at 11670 Eagle Street Northwest, Suite 100. Mr. Crowell.
All right, good evening, Commission. The lone item on the agenda tonight is for conditional use permit for a new auto detailing business, and if the business would be located in Suite 100 of the Coon Rapids Tech Center building, so that's on the corner here of Northdale and Eagle Street, kind of outlined in blue. It's currently zoned industrial, and we would, our code, how we kind of interpret auto detailing would be a minor auto repair use, and that is classified as a conditional use in the industrial zoning district. The McManus Detailing would provide a variety of interior detailing and cleaning services, with some exterior kind of shine and wash services in this space as well. I'll go over the parking and site plan here in a minute, but just want to show, we're talking about Suite 100, which is kind of the suite furthest from the street corner. There's one other space leased next door, and that's a storage facility for someone's landscaping business, kind of stores their equipment and things there. And the Coon Rapids Tech Center was approved back in the planning case 2146, and it was intended as a nine-suite business incubator building, kind of the ideas for small companies or vehicle or equipment storage, kind of for other off-site services or other kinds of warehousing space in the building. So McManus Detailing, as I mentioned, would occupy a 1,500 square foot space. Primary services include cleaning and vacuuming car mats, removing trash from vehicles, vacuuming the interior of vehicles, shampooing carpets, cloth seating, kind of window washing in the space, and then some other exterior services. If people request, they can do vehicle washing and hand drying, tire and rim shine in the space. The applicant indicated this maybe happens 5% of the time, so it's very unlikely that they're doing a lot of actual exterior washing here, and it's primarily the interior cleaning service. I did note in the staff report, so this business has been occupied in the space for a little while, and has been providing some auto detailing services. As you can kind of see from the pictures from the applicant, this use doesn't require a whole lot of interior building, kind of build out, and therefore just didn't really have too many permits, and was just really kind of unaware that they needed a conditional use permit. So as soon as staff were made aware that they were in this space, we worked with them, and they've been really flexible in accommodating with us to walk through this process and make sure that they have a conditional use permit to continue operating. I think the building official and I, you know, since they weren't really doing any kind of oil changes or dealing with auto fluids or anything like that, that there wasn't a really intense use of this space, so we just kind of let them know that they should really come through this process and just make sure we have a CUP on file before they continue. So on the floor plan, you can see here, really the backend of the space is just used for their different material and cleaning product storage, and then they have a little front desk area, but the space is primarily used there to park the vehicles and perform the cleaning services on the vehicle. It was also noted in the staff report that the applicant can park three to four cars inside their space, and then they also have these two additional spaces outside to meet the minimum requirement. When the Tech Center Building was approved by the Planning Commission in 2021, it was kind of intended or approved that each unit would be granted two parking spaces, so they're utilizing that. And the applicant has also informed us that there is a kind of provision in their lease with the property owner that they're only allowed to use those two exterior parking stalls for their vehicles, so we're, you know, we're not trying to create an environment where all of a sudden they're using up all the spaces, and now we're unable to lease the other spaces, or there's not adequate parking on the site. And then, as you'll see, just to kind of further reiterate that point, we just attached a condition to their CUP on that matter. So this was a photo, just to show the outside of the suite where the detailing service would be provided, and then where those two designated parking stalls would be. Here's just an image provided by the applicant, kind of showing the variety of cleaning materials and tools that they're using. I think here, this is just, the intent is to show this as a far less intense kind of auto repair use, and they're really just using a variety of cleaning products and vacuums to do that interior cleaning work of vehicles. So, kind of the staff analysis, that we felt the use did meet the minimum standards for our conditional use permit. I just wanted to highlight a couple of items again that really are those conditions that I attached, I think just to further reiterate things that are already kind of in place with a use like this. So, again, just making clear that the CUP is for auto detailing use, and that no other minor auto repair services that could lead to part swapping or location of junk vehicles on the site would be prohibited, and so they're really defined in that, that auto detailing use. Again, just thinking about exterior parking on the site, they have that written into the lease with their property owner, and we would just further add it as a condition, just to ensure that they're only utilizing the two parking stalls outside their space for exterior parking, and then that any interior work that may need to be completed in the site would get its required building permits, and then ensure that we have a certificate of occupancy from the Building Inspections Division, just to make sure the use is not a detriment to the public health, safety, or general welfare. So with that, the staff made a recommendation to approve the CUP, and then, again, kind of those main conditions that I just highlighted on the previous slide. So happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Crowell. Commissioner, any questions? All right, does the petitioner have anything they'd like to add?
I don't believe we have a representative from the application here.
All right. I guess a question I have then. I didn't see any restroom facilities. What do employees do?
Yeah, yep, so on the site plan here, when that building was approved, there is a common restroom at the end of the building here, that was kind of intended to be used for the various suites in the building. I know talking with our building official, it didn't seem that this was going to require an additional restroom inside the space, and that kind of, kind of common bathroom that's provided for the whole building would be adequate or meet the code.
Okay, do all, excuse me, do all of the other units have a restroom in them then?
They do not, so this was kind of approved and built as a kind of shell building or spec building, and that, as each individual space would be leased out, they would work with us, kind of determine if it needed a CUP, or what other building code improvements might be needed in the individual space. So if there was a use that would require that, we would work with them when they move in to provide that bathroom, but otherwise, that common facility is kind of there to help cover, cover everyone.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
So, Mr. Crowell, does the facility have water available inside each unit, or any kind of water source?
Yes, they are connected to have water. I believe the, this McManus Detailing is going to need like a three-compartment sink, and so they will need a plumbing permit, kind of assuming, or after they would get the, if they got the conditional use permit, I should say, and would go to that next step. I know they'll be getting a plumbing permit and have that three-compartment sink.
Mr. Crowell, or Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
So that being the case, then where, where is the water being disposed of now, when they're cleaning and so forth?
Yeah, there is a floor drain in the space. I believe all the spaces have a floor drain that connects to the sanitary sewer system, and with the products that they're using, our Public Works Director kind of described it, you know, like at someone's home, if you're using like laundry detergent or any kind of soaps that are just going into the sanitary system. So there is, there is a floor drain in the space that, where it's currently going, and I believe it's just like a kind of water spigot hookup where, you know, it could attach a hose or something for the water.
All right, we do need to have a public hearing on this matter, so at this time, I, whoa, excuse me, open a public hearing in planning case 23-18, conditional use permit for McManus Detailing, 11670 Eagle Street Northwest, Suite Number 100. Anyone wish to speak to this public hearing? Anyone wish to speak? Seeing none, close the public hearing, limit comments to the commission. Mr. Crowell, is adequate parking for employees with the two existing parking stalls?
Yeah, so the applicant in there, I believe it was in the narrative, they do have three total employees, but they're kind of staggered hours, so I believe it's no more than one employee at a time that's working there. And then they have, our code would require six stalls, so they can kind of fit up to four vehicles inside the suite, and then they have those two exterior stalls.
So there is room for four vehicles inside?
Yeah, I would, I would believe so. It's a pretty open space. I think in our code, we require like a 484 square foot garage, and we kind of consider that room for two vehicles, so if you kind of think about it that way, with this being 1,500 square feet, they'd have room if they need to put four cars in there. I believe they're anticipating maybe two to four vehicles a day, and again, those are kind of staggered throughout the day. People are booking an appointment online, you know, kind of for an hour timeframe or however long it needs, so there may be a potential overlap here and there, but it sounds like it's pretty intended that they're staggered out throughout the day.
All right.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Schmoki.
So I'm, was this the type of business that was expected to be occupying this type of space? It seems to me the setup with a shared bathroom, et cetera, it actually is a little different than what I thought it was going to be designed for, so it seems like it's more intended now for storage, not continuous use throughout the day. I think we're, we have to kind of keep that in mind. Are we trying to, are we trying to allow a business that wasn't intended for this type of space?
Yeah, from what I could find from the staff report, in this case it was Scott that kind of led that, that project before I started with the city, and that property owner had kind of indicated that it was maybe more intended for a smaller business, and maybe not so much kind of a day-to-day customer interaction. I did talk with the property owner, and, you know, he wasn't intending or doesn't want this space to kind of be full of a lot of auto repairs and creating like an auto mall by any means. I think he felt because they were really just providing like cleaning services, and they, the property owner kind of felt this is a little of a less intense use, and felt something could be appropriate, that kind of use could be appropriate in this, this building, and I think that's kind of where staff landed too. You know, had they been doing more like oil changes or auto repair, I don't know if that would be a good fit for this building, but here again, it's kind of more kind of vacuuming and cleaning out cars.
So, Mr. Crowell, are we prepared then to draw a line on where we would, on the types of businesses then, in the future?
Yeah, I guess it kind of depends.
How many employees to share a single bathroom?
Yeah.
What's the agreement for maintaining that bathroom? I'm sure that's probably in the lease, but I'm a little hung up on it, because I actually thought each stall was going to have its own bathroom. I thought it was almost like its own mini suite. That's what I recall from that. You said it was approved with a single, so I must have missed something there, but that's what makes me think that the purpose is, I'm a little concerned that we're setting a little precedence here.
Sure, yeah, I think it'll be something that we just are going to have to treat on a case-by-case basis as uses come in. Can certainly check with our building official, again, on the bathroom component, but I think it wasn't going to require a bathroom build out in this, this suite, but, yeah, I, it's, I guess it's just kind of one of those things, we're just kind of working on it case-by-case and kind of can provide direction to them if it feels appropriate there.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
Well, when I, I remember that instance too, and I never thought it was designed for office space or anything like that. It seemed like it was industrial, technical, kind of come and go, not daily office use. And if that were the case, then I could see where you'd want to have a restroom inside the suite, but I don't remember it being marketed as an office facility, more of a drop-in, drop-out storage unit, that's my recollection, but, hey, that's a year and a half ago, two years ago.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
Yeah, I would agree with actually that recollection. The intent, as was described to us, was not customer-facing businesses. Customers would not necessarily be visiting the location, was what was discussed. It was more along the lines of, this is where an electrician would park their truck, or a plumber would park their truck if they didn't want it in their driveway, or somebody could keep their equipment, or they might bring something there to work on and then go. I guess my question is, you know, if, if individuals are coming and dropping off their car, where are they waiting? You know, or do they have to get a ride back? Like, what's happening with the customers of the business is even the next step that I'm going past this of, you know, if it takes a couple hours to get your car detailed, you drop it off and you have to get a ride out of there? Are you waiting? Like, there's no amenities around there, there's no sidewalks, there's no nothing. You know, I, I guess I just did not contemplate that this industrial building would have customer-facing businesses in it at all, or customer visitation-based businesses, other than come in, see the showroom, which was another option that they described, and then you leave, like it's, you know, options are visible, but you don't spend any real time there as a customer. So, yeah, I guess, and also the four spaces inside and the two spaces outside feels a little klugey as well. I don't know, I guess that feels a little odd how we're shoehorning that in there, but yes, to the other members' recollection, this was not necessarily what we were thinking was going here. So, I guess, you know, our code stands for a code of what is required. I find it a little challenging to, you know, I guess, what's the lease agreement say about, again, to the extent of use of the bathroom, shared use, shared maintenance facilities, health and safety from that perspective, if it's expected that customers are using that as well? You know, it adds a lot of layers to it, where it's not just happens to be a, you need a spot to just make a quick stop, because you happen to be dropping your stuff off. If it's customer-facing, that's a different story.
All right. Anyone else have any comments?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Heikala.
I agree with Commissioner, Commissioner Schmoki, she made some good points there, and, and Commissioner Geisler as well. If somebody's going to bring their car in, you know, are they going to sit and wait? Are they, they're, you know, walk down to the end of the facility to use the restroom? It just seems a little bit more than we anticipated that it would be.
I'm in agreement as well on those points, and I'm a little concerned that the petitioner is not here to answer any questions as far as his operation and the fact that he had been operating prior to issuing necessary permits or what have you with the city. I don't know, I think I'm a bit reluctant to approve this without at least hearing from the petitioner.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Heikala.
I'm also wondering that, is there any responsibility as far as the owner of the building seeing or being aware of the business and how it will operate in, you know, in this square and so forth?
Yeah, I guess, so your question's kind of if the building owner is kind of aware of this operation and maybe how it fits. Yeah, I, you know, I did talk with the property owner when the application was first kind of submitted, and from what I recall with that discussion, again, it was something, you know, I think he acknowledged, I think some of the comments that you all made, that maybe this wasn't their like first choice or how they're intending to use this space, but I think after kind of talking with the owners of McManus Detailing and kind of understanding their operation, that's where they felt maybe it was a good fit for this space, again, because it's more just kind of vehicle cleaning there. So, you know, they are, they are aware of it. We've had a discussion with them just to make sure that they're communicating with people interested in this building, that they are coming to us and like our Building Inspections Division to make sure any permits that may be needed are being required, so we don't run into a situation like this again. And I feel like everyone's been receptive to that and has been working with us kind of throughout the process.
Mr. Chair. One more quick, one more quick question. Are they taking the trash in and home with them each day, or is there a trash receptacle somewhere?
I believe there is a trash room or a dumpster enclosure there for the whole building, that they would be kind of taking it out of their suite into that common trash area.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
Mr. Crowell, how many businesses of those nine available are occupied, do you know?
Yeah, so currently two are leased, so including this, this one. So you have Suite 100 here where McManus Detailing, and then Suite 200 next door has been leased to a landscaping company, and they're parking their equipment for their landscaping business there, kind of overnight.
And does each separate business have a lease with the owner? Is that right?
That, that is my understanding, yep, that they're, yeah, they're leasing the individual space with the, with the owner.
Okay. So we don't know if McManus Detailing just provides an appointment where you, you actually do have to just drop your car and leave? So then it wouldn't be such face-to-face, I don't, I don't know, I haven't visited their website, or?
Yeah, I guess what, what I can go off of is kind of the, the narrative they, they provided without the applicant here, and my understanding is, yeah, they, they can go online to the website and just book an appointment online, and so I think that's the intent with them, is that things are brought to them by appointment, it's not necessarily a walk-in situation. You know, that being said, I'm sure if someone was kind of driving by and they didn't have an appointment at that time, I'm sure they would service that vehicle, but the, the intent is that they're scheduling ahead of time and coordinating that pickup and drop-off of their vehicle.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Schmoki.
I want to just take it one step further. What about signage? Are they, is, is there any promoting of that the business is in there to draw in customers or anything along those lines?
Yeah, the signage was done, they do have an approved sign permit for the whole site.
Right.
So it's kind of intended that there's one kind of monument sign there that I think is just advertising the Tech Center Building itself, and then each individual suite, you can see above the door here, it's a little hard to see in this image, but there is a sign plate that, you know, essentially someone can kind of put their logo or some lettering for their business above the door.
Mr. Bucciconi, would we have the option to table this and continue it to next month's meeting, or would we come into a problem with the date for the approval deny?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, the 60-day rule here does run on September 30th, but it's important to note that it has not been extended, and it can be one time to a 120-day. We just have to provide that in writing, and that would have to occur before September 30th. So if you tabled it, we would provide that notice.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
I think it's something to look at. The fact that they have the front desk scoped out on their little interior floor plan implies that somebody is going to be walking up and sitting there and talking to customers, but there is nowhere for customers to be. We know they have to drive a vehicle there to get it there, being the point. You know, I think answering questions of how are you handling your customers, where are they waiting, what is the plan for that, some of these other basic amenity things, I think would help us gain more comfort of if this level of service business is appropriate for this location. So, you know, knowing that we have some open questions, you know, I would hope that the applicant would review this, and I guess I would move that in planning case 2318, we postpone action on this or table the item until our following meeting in October.
October 19th.
October 19th.
Second. Motion by Geisler, second by Heikala, any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Schmoki.
I guess the one thing I'd like to add is, I guess, for this site, because there are still so many vacancies, I would like to understand a little bit more from staff in terms of how they help to give guidance on, you know, where you're going to draw the line in the future. This might, you know, be acceptable, we might approve this, but then what about the next business where it seems a little on the gray line, right? So that would be helpful to understand kind of your plans for that.
Any other comments? All right, we have a motion to continue this to our October 19th meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, and case is continued. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to other business.
All right, for October Planning Commission meeting, we have, our other senior planner, Max Patzner, will present on a subdivision exception or kind of boundary line adjustment case, and we have another conditional use permit application. And we have another conditional use permit application for United Rentals. We'd have this continued case for McManus. And I believe that's what we'll, we'll have. There's a couple of site plan applications that are still gathering some information that we hope to have by the end of the year, but they won't quite be ready for October.
All right, thank you. Commissioner, anyone have anything for other business? Hearing done.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Casey, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Please adjourn.